Yes, I have to continue. Okay, so we have minutes to approve from 4:27 and 6:22. I'll be honest, I don't know if I missed those.
No, you didn't. You didn't miss them. I don't have them done yet.
Okay, okay. So we'll table those. Next on the agenda is an update from Kristi Goulazza on the Housing Manager. Kristi, are you available?
Anne, sorry about that. Just took me a second to get unmuted.
Perfect.
And my dog just came inside and he's really thirsty. So he's drinking water. That's what the weird sound is in the background. Sorry about that. So our last Housing Coalition meeting was on 6/17. In that meeting, they finished their bylaws that they were drafting in order to move forward in getting a board seated. And the reason for that is so that they can have a formal decision-making process. The next meeting's going to be on Wednesday, and that will be from 1 to 3. And I'm happy to send out that invitation. I think most of you guys are on the email list. So sorry about that. The dog got the kids' food. Things escalate quickly as soon as you're on Zoom, it seems like. The subcommittees for the Climax Parcel Committee and the deed restriction are both planning on meeting. Well, deed restriction met last Friday, and Climax Parcel Committee is meeting tomorrow. The deed restriction committee is hoping to bring draft recommendations to you guys sometime in October. It's a pretty aggressive timeline, but we will see if we can accomplish it or not. The policy advisory team is just chugging along. They met on the 9th and had a really good, robust meeting. Feels like things are starting to get a little more Lake County-focused. Did it feel like that to you, Heather, in this last meeting?
Yeah, definitely. You had a good, robust conversation.
Good. I'm glad to hear it felt like that for you as well. And then the systems of support is something that we had planned on collaborating with the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments to bring more financial literacy and mortgage readiness programming to Lake County. However, they've had a turnover in staff. Autumn Dever is no longer with them, and they don't know when they're going to be able to replace her. Oh, sorry if everybody did not know that. I don't quite know what happened, but it did not seem like it was a planned... It was a plan to leave because the person who's covering for her didn't have a lot of training and stuff. So they're still working on rehiring her and rehiring for that position. And I'll keep everybody posted on that because I do think that they are, you know, super important to us, and I like to try to maintain that relationship as best as we can. Anyway, Chaffee Housing Trust and Full Circle are thinking about collaborating to bring financial literacy and mortgage readiness courses to Lake County sooner than later because, as we know, during times of economic struggle, predatory lending goes up in a variety of ways, and it's hard for people to repair their credit when they're already struggling. And so anything we can do to mitigate that and help people get into sustainable housing is going to be beneficial in the long run. And then my last update is about the Housing Authority. They are trying to have a meeting before the end of the month, just trying to find a date that works for everybody. They have a couple of people who are interested in being on their board and have submitted letters of interest. So at that next meeting, they're going to hope to appoint a couple people to that board as well as adopt a resolution to expand their scope to help bring affordable housing to all. And then the last thing is a third position opened on their board. So if you guys know anybody who might be interested in that, I don't know if that's something you might want to pass along to some of the people who don't get appointed to your positions. I know you had six interested applicants, so I'm happy to get that information to them, however you guys see that, if you feel like that's appropriate. Sorry for the interrupted and kind of fast update, but that's what I got.
I couldn't hear the dog at all, so it's okay. Kristi, that's... Thank you for that. That's a lot of good information. And I wonder, I'm just throwing out there, you know, as we have these CARES Act funds that are coming to the city and the county, to share with the city, you know, partly what I think might kind of pivot from a more economic or business-focused support is the extended unemployment rate and community members who remain unemployed. And I think that housing, that financial... Sorry, I can't remember the exact title you said, but that kind of training and those classes are probably exactly the kind of thing that we should be kind of robustly providing for folks throughout the community. And I'd be interested to see how we might be able to help support that at an ongoing basis.
Great. That's good. Glad to hear that. Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah.
I'll probably hang out just to see you guys. It's been a while. But that's the end of my update.
Thank you, Kristi. Any questions for Kristi before we move to the next agenda item?
None.
One more question for me. Kristi, when does Full Circle and the Chaffee Housing Trust, is it? Gosh, how can I not know? Plan to organize that, or are those just in kind of preliminary stages of conversation?
Very much preliminary. I had a meeting with Reed earlier today just to kind of talk about how that might work. Stephanie has a few ideas, so this is really, you know, in the baby steps. It's in its infancy. But I will keep you guys updated as that goes along.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is the Planning Commission, or PC, recommendations, and this is for filling our vacancies. So to kind of remind everybody, we have four vacancies, two are full members and two are alternate positions. And Howard and Sarah and I all met and did kind of, I hate to call them interviews, but introductions with each of the six candidates or interested parties that had submitted applications to us. And they all were really great. I mean, it's nice to see a lot of people with a lot of passion, and it was exciting to see. And a couple of them are newbies in the last two years to Leadville Lake County, and they love this place, and so that's awesome. After all of the introductions and meetings with everybody, we kind of came up with a recommendation of our primary positions recommending appointment of... I'm sorry, I'm trying to find my names in front of me here, but we have...
Abby Dahman.
Yeah, Dahman. Sorry, I was like trying to think of Abby's last name. So we have Abby Dahman and Dan Northcraft, and then the two alternate positions of Bryce, and I apologize, I don't have Bryce's last name in front of me either. Help me out here. What's the other?
Erin Paulin.
Erin Paulin. Yeah, thank you.
Erin who? Paulin. Like Sarah Palin.
Palin, Paulin, yep.
Yeah.
Whoever she is.
Yeah, where is she? I don't know. Anyways, so we have that recommendation. I know that since then, Sarah may have a different perspective on that recommendation, but that's kind of how we left it. So I'll open it up to the others to give their feedback as well. Howard?
No, you know, I think you've covered it pretty well. That's how we voted, and we discussed each member pretty thoroughly, and I think we made good decisions.
My concern, just coming after that, and I did not interview Dan Northcraft, although I will say, when he asked me, even before submitting a letter of interest, I said, "Oh, yeah, go right ahead for the discussion," but I think there might be a conflict there. So my only concern for the board's consideration is the inherent conflict of interest in being on the board. But it is an advisory board to the ultimate decision-makers of the B O C C, so that's just something to think about.
And to give some... Will you go into a little bit of depth about that? Because I'm still having a hard time finding the conflict of interest that he has over, for instance, somebody like myself. So if you could expand a little bit on your thoughts with that.
Sure. I just, I mean, and it may be quite comparable, but I think that, you know, his... We did talk about him not being a developer and being a builder. He doesn't have any current projects in the county, just perhaps, and how his perspective is valuable as a builder. But I thought that he could continue to provide that through the Home Builders Association and their participation with the Planning Commission and the board in making recommendations or any giving any feedback for policy or quasi-judicial decisions. I think that it's just, you know, looking at it as a... The mission of a Planning Commission or a Citizens Board, you know, and having the options of other folks too that do not have any personal gain to be put in question. There are simply other options. And I don't, you know, I don't, I know Heather, the three of us talked about, you know, this is not necessarily a matter of Dan's integrity. I don't think that anybody thinks that Dan has...
Why did you miss that interview?
How did I miss the interview?
Yeah, how did you miss the interview?
I had a conflict.
Oh.
And Heather and Howard were on Dan's interview. Howard and I were on Lupe's interview, and Heather had a conflict. And then the other four, the three of us, were able to be present.
Sounds conflictedly normal.
But ultimately, I think, right now, the recommendation to the board primarily lies with the Planning Commission members of Howard and Heather. My suggestion was to swap and place Bryce and Abby on the voting members and Dan and Erin as the alternates to, you know, just kind of monitor the kind of feedback that we may get from public observation and the participation of those four new contributing
Well, I guess we'll take the Planning Commission's recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners next week.
Yeah, so do we have to, but do we need to, like, do we need to do... First of all, is there any other discussion amongst Steve Boyle? Do you have any questions for us on the candidates? And Howard, do you have anything else? And then do we need to do, I assume we just need to do a vote on what our recommendation to the county commissioners is going to be?
I would vote by motion.
I don't have any questions because I'm not familiar with the candidates.
Okay.
The only thing I could add is, I understand where Sarah's coming from. I totally understand her thoughts. But my ears being on the board, I recognize the fact that it would be, I think, to the county's interest and benefit to have somebody that's familiar with building as we go along. And if there was a conflict, for instance, if he was trying to get a code change that is probably going to affect something that he's doing, I think we were smart enough to recognize that, and I think that would be voted down by the other members of the board. I really think that, again, that his experience and after talking with him, his integrity and his reputation so far, should not prohibit him from being as a member. That's all.
So next is just the... So we just need a vote amongst the three of us as to our recommendation to the county commissioners, and then they can make their decision there. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I can make the motion that we recommend to the county commissioners that they accept Abby Dahman and Dan Northcraft as the permanent members. And I wouldn't say permanent, but...
Voting, I guess.
Voting members, right. Erin Paulin or Palin and Bryce. I'll get there in a second. Bryce Erlich.
Yes, thank you.
Right, Bryce Erlich. I had it in the pages here, just trying to get them loose. That's my recommendation.
Steve, do you have any discussion or second on that?
I will second on that. No discussion.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is this application for extension. And sorry, I'm trying to pull it up for the file. Extension request for file 19-17 for the Leadville Townhomes PUD Subdivision Sketch Plan. Anne, do you want to give us a quick little update on that?
Sure. I do want to start the discussion off with, unfortunately, we have, by no fault of the applicant, we haven't been able to coordinate with him to get him here for this hearing, and so he isn't present currently. However, we can certainly share staff's findings, and I think we can even venture as far as to offer a recommendation if you'd be so inclined to hear that. But basically, the code, and he is under the new version of the code, he submitted under the modified PUD and subdivision regulations, does allow for a one-time, one-year extension, and there are several findings, all of which I provided in the two suggested motions, one for approval and one for denial. And if you would like to table this discussion until he can be present, that's certainly a choice. However, I guess we would offer that staff would recommend approval. Largely the basis of why he's asking for this is basically he wanted to fine-tune the direction and type of housing unit that he wanted to bring to this community. So initially, he thought that he was going to become a manufactured home distributor and thought that he had a model that he thought would be well-received, be within a price point, that he thought would be attainable for workforce housing, which is one of his primary global's, if not the primary goal. And then after doing a little market research, he found the Fading West Development Group, who has the Chaffee County model of the farm that some of us have recently toured, and immediately thought that that model, he thought, would be a good fit for what he wants to do at the site. And so they have formed a partnership, and that will be his distributor. And I think that, so he has spent this time trying to kind of fine-tune with the thought of wanting to be very successful, you know, as we're aware, there are conditions that he brings five units online with deed restriction AMIs. And as well as, he started this project to make sure that he had housing for his employees and his company and his business. So I think it was kind of a critical need to make sure that what he brings online meets his goals as well as the community goals. So I think there's some merit in the time that he's spent. Then couple that with COVID. I think that there is, so good cause is the finding for subdivision, and then there's some additional findings for PUD. But staff's recommendation would be for him to be granted a one-time, one-year extension. He does indicate a readiness. That's one of the findings, is that we do believe that he would be able to perform into preliminary within the year, granted the extension. And he has indicated he has completed his geotechnical investigation and does feel that he can meet that deadline. So that's what we have to offer. Certainly welcome any questions you might have and any thoughts that you would have on moving forward, or if you would prefer to have the applicant present before making the decision. So that's what we have for you, Heather.
Thank you, Anne. My initial couple of thoughts that I have are that, you know, his project is one that I'm kind of excited about as far as being on the home front of us trying to figure out housing affordability, because we really do need to get buy-in from business owners, corporations, whatever it is, that are over the hill and we're housing their workers. And this is a great kind of introduction to that. And I feel like he has been very willing to move forward in good faith on the project. I also really like the farm project also. I think that would fit really well in Lake County. And if that's kind of, if he needs to be doing that investigation to get pricing and all of those things together, I think that it's absolutely, in my opinion, worthwhile to give him that extra time, because I'd like the project to be successful in hopes that it would then snowball some additional interest in similar projects from other small businesses in that area. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, like, you know, the first time around, I thought he was pretty reputable too in the beginning there, and I haven't had much to do with him since, maybe the rest you have. But I have to agree, everything you're saying makes sense, especially when we're in this crisis, actually, of affordable housing. So, you know, I'm on board. Unfortunately, I'm not able, with this new computer, like I think I told you guys before, during this coronavirus, my old standby broke down. It was on Vista for years, and I got mitt. I got pretty good with Vista. But I'm on 10, and I can't get two screens up. I can't even get my printer to work in the background. I don't know if you can see it. I got a laser that I'm supposed to telegraph back and forth, so I don't have any information in front of me. I'm sorry.
I can pull up the staff report too on share screen if you'd like. I'll figure out how to do that. Steve, did you have any comments while I'm figuring that out?
No comments for me, no issues. I read over the report, and I agree with what Anne has said about it and agree with you, what you said about it. And there's a need, so no issues from staff report on this at all.
Okay. Trying to figure this out. Hang on just a second.
And I'm happy to, if you want to direct staff to read a motion for you to vote on, I can always do that. I've got it here too.
Oh, yeah.
That would be the simple way.
Yes, please.
Would you like me to move into a recommendation for, or a motion for approval?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay. Okay. The Planning Commission recommends approval of a one-time, one-year extension for the conditional approval of file number 19-17 Leadville Townhomes PUD Major Subdivision Sketch Plan, extending the expiration date until July 1, 2021. And further finding that, one, the applicant has demonstrated good cause for granting of that extension; two, the delay was beyond the reasonable control of the developer; three, the development complies with these land use regulations and the comprehensive plan; and four, there's a reasonable likelihood that the next step in the development application will be submitted in the next one year.
So now it'll be one of you two to say, "So moved."
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second, of course.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I think that I'd like to clarify that I believe this is one year from July 1, Anne, or is that going to be from today?
I did it from July 1 this year. That would have been when they, yep, so the motion has July 1. It's extended to July 1, 2021. The new code allows for as long as they come in and petition for an extension before the expiration. So he petitioned prior to the July 1 date. Our hearing just couldn't happen with proper notice requirements until July 13th for the regular meeting, but he did petition in time, too, just FYI. So I took it from the official action record of the board, which would have given him until July 1, 2020.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, can I get a roll call vote, please?
For it's aye. Still, Larry Boyle?
Yeah, you and I said at the exact same time, so...
Okay. All right. Motion?
Can you repeat it, Steve?
Steve, can you repeat just your aye, because I don't think I got it on the recording?
No problem. Boyle, aye.
Okay. Anything else anybody wants to talk about or get off their chest before we close the meeting?
I guess I just have one question. July 27th would be our next meeting date. Is there desire, we don't have a pending application. Is there a desire to have, we'll do the appointments, the board will be doing an appointment next week based on the recommendations? Do you want to have a welcome on-board meeting? Do you want to, is there any discussion? We can do it offline as well about preparing an agenda for the 27th?
I definitely would like to start figuring out how to squeeze some of our project things into our empty agendas. That being said, I'm leaving tomorrow and I come back on the 27th, so I don't know how much I can help you in deciding what that looks like. So I could go either way. I mean, I definitely wouldn't be opposed to having a meeting that evening to welcome, you know, a quick Zoom meeting to welcome everybody on board. I don't know if there's any, like, Planning Commission or more so Board 101 things that we want to...
Yeah, that might be a great thing to look into with DOLA and kind of a Planning 101 to...
If there's a webinar or something, and we just, like, ask you an introduction, and then we ask them to complete that, or I don't know. I don't know what there is, but something along those lines.
I think there's a lot, you know, like, DOLA had talked to us about a live Planning Commission training, and I think we all should do that together. If there is a webinar kind of thing, I mean, that, of course, might, I say do that together, and it would be Zoom or virtual, I would presume. But let's, maybe we can reach out and figure out what's available. That way, it's kind of an easy, plugged-in agenda for that date, and... easy plugged in agenda for that date and we don't have to kind of plan the details necessarily.
That's a great, staff can reach out and see if we can arrange something and, and make it kind of a light agenda, but if we can put together a training of, of some kind, um, we can work on that and stay in communication offline to just make sure it works for everybody.
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, it's possible that Abby and Dan, for instance, have some, and maybe even Bryce, I don't know, but you know, I, I think that there's a few, if not all of them, that haven't served on boards before, so they may not in, in, in Planning Commission is then like step two, but like even just understanding motions and so I don't know if there's like little how-to or info one-on-one packet on that that we could give them as an onboarding. I think that would be awesome.
Sounds great. And then I would just venture out to say again that, um, to put it on the radar, I don't know exactly when we can talk about it and I don't want to make our agendas overwhelming, but I think that you may want to consider revisiting the minimum lot size in a couple of zone districts, um, having that conversation again. Just in light of, of interest that is surfacing in the development and in conversations that we've had. So I just want to kind of try to keep that on the radar a little bit. I know that's kind of a, a heavy lift, but I know, you know, we kind of felt some urgency in that where we left off. So I would just propose just kind of thinking about that if we want to revisit that and have a little bit bigger discussion on it.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. That should be one of our first things that we look at.
On which topic, Anne, I'm sorry?
Um, so we had left off considering the potential, we, we kind of talked about a conservation minded development thought after a couple of our last conversations and applications and public hearings. And that maybe it was time to consider a increasing the minimum lot size in the ag forestry and maybe the recreational zone districts. But I do think that we certainly talked about it in those, those two zone districts in particular and, and maybe being a little more intentional about what we want to see outlying as far as development.
Yeah, I think the idea is to recognize where we want that higher density and where we may be down. And trying to plan for that accordingly because I think, you know, that's kind of what's happened in the last of the few meetings is people want to, in the meeting, try to regulate that and we can't. I mean, code, code confines us to whatever we have written in there. And so when you've got a lot of community members that are, you know, kind of speaking up that that's, they feel like things are too high density in certain areas, I think that this, it's time for us to look at those, at the different areas in the county and make them align a little bit more with the comp plan as far as where we see high density, allowing those smaller lot sizes there and then where we're not anticipating a lot of high density max, you know, upping those, I guess. Okay, cool. Anybody have any? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you guys. Good to see you.
Thanks for doing it.
Bye.
Bye.